Good evening, everyone. It is 7:00 PM. It's time for our regular, regular meeting of Monday, July 17, 2023. Madam Clerk, would you please call the row?
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Bell.
Here.
Councilmember Bokey.
Here.
Councilmember Branstetter.
Here.
Councilmember Lorisella has been excused. Deputy Mayor Moss.
Here.
And Mayor Whalen has been excused. You have a quorum?
Thank you. If you would join me for a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada. One nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
First on our agenda tonight, we have a proclamation recognizing August 1st as National Night Out. So I'd ask our Police Chief Smith to join Councilmember Anderson at the podium, please.
Some things are in 12-point type, other things are in 12-year-old type. This is always a pleasure to publicize a national night out. It's a great event. People get to know their neighbors, come out in the sun, meet some of our great public safety officers, both from fire and police in our area. And it actually does make, knowing other people, make it a safer community. So we'd like to make this proclamation. Whereas on Tuesday, August 1st, 2023, residents of the city of Lakewood will have an opportunity to get together in their neighborhood to participate in the 39th Annual National Night Out Against Crime. And whereas National Night Out provides an exceptional opportunity for the city of Lakewood to join a national event where thousands of other communities and millions of people around the world come together to promote cooperative police community crime prevention. And whereas Lakewood residents play a vital role in assisting the Lakewood Police Department through joint crime and drug prevention efforts in the city of Lakewood. And whereas it is essential that all residents of Lakewood be made aware of the importance of community policing partnerships, neighborhood safety, awareness and cooperation, and the impacts that their participation can have on reducing crime, drugs and violence in Lakewood. And whereas National Night Out enhances these relationships, this relationship between neighbors and law enforcement while bringing back a true sense of community. Now for, now therefore, the Lakewood City Council hereby proclaims August 1st, 2023, as National Night Out Against Crime in the city of Lakewood, and urges all residents to sign up their neighborhood to officially participate in the event by registering with the Lakewood Police Department and bring people together to strengthen neighborhood bonds and engage with police and city officials on the night of the event. Proclaim the 17th day of July, 2023, Jason Whalen, Mayor. Chief?
Thank you. Well, thank you, sir. And I certainly want to express how thankful we are to host National Night Out. And most importantly, we want to invite all of the citizens to come out and take part in this great occasion to meet law enforcement as well as fire and other first responders. And the last thing is, I just want to challenge you to bring someone, some of our youth out. It's so important that they become a part of the greater part of the community and feel more cohesive with the community. So I challenge you, please bring more of our youth out to this type of occasion. Thank you.
If you would join me down front, we'll take a picture.
We have a picture taker.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Anderson. Next on our agenda, I'm going to call Assistant City Manager Dave Buwer. If you would come forward and introduce your team.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. This evening, through the city manager, I've asked that a group of individuals come before the city council and give a presentation on the Woodbrook Wagon Homeowners Cooperative. Oftentimes, the department has most challenging assignments deal with mobile home parks or manufactured parks, mainly because landowners oftentimes do not make proper investment into the facilities and have poor management practices. So often, we get involved in these situations, and the best that we can do is sometimes just place a Band-Aid on a situation. It's very rare that we have a real success story, but in this case, it is a success story. And I have been working with Amy Chom with Rock USA over the last several months to develop a plan to improve this particular manufactured park, but also to improve the quality of life for the 80-plus residents who live there. I'd like to introduce Amy Chom. She's going to speak to you this evening. She has a few slides to share with you. And then also have her introduce her representatives from the park to the city council this evening. So with that, Amy, I give the microphone to you.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. Appreciate you taking the time to listen to my short presentation. You said I had 45 minutes, right? So I am Amy Chom, and I'm the VP of Special Projects and Technical Services for an organization called Rock USA. Rock USA is a national, is there a way to get that thing off from Zoom? It would be. There you go. All right. Sorry. Um, back up. Oh, well. There you go. All right. Let's pretend that didn't happen. So Rock USA is a national nonprofit that supports residents of manufacturing housing communities to enable them to organize and purchase the land under their homes. So we support them with obtaining the financing and then providing technical assistance and training on proper operations of their community. So in a sense, in lieu of the landlord owning the property and charging the rents, we develop a condo association or homeowners association under a limited equity cooperative model. We have 312 communities as of today. Eight conversions have happened just this year. We have another four in the pipeline. We have 24 resident-owned communities here in Washington State, and two of them are here in Lakewood. We don't do this work alone. We are a CDFI lender as well, are a part of our organization. And we work with various housing finance commissions as well as Impact Capital Partners as one of our largest investors. Whenever we're in a state, we try to partner with the local organizations to develop a financing package that's equitable to the residents, allowing them to maintain their long-term affordability. Specifically in this community, we do have Washington Housing Finance, and we have Capital Impact Partners. And we don't do this work alone. We do it with the support of a network of nonprofit affiliates that are located throughout the country. They work directly with the communities, both during the pre-purchase phase, educating them to understand what they're agreeing to, and post-purchase to support their operational excellence as the community continues to operate. Tonight, I have Nora Edge of Rock Northwest here, just to give a quick little explanation of how our CTAP, we call them Certified Technical Assistance Providers, so how our CTAP partners support these communities.
Thank you, Amy, and thank you all for having us today. So great. My name is Nora, and I work with Rock Northwest. Established in 2008, Rock Northwest is a program of the Northwest Cooperative Development Center. We serve residents of manufactured housing communities across Washington and Idaho. We help residents form cooperative business, secure financing, and purchase the community in which they live. We recognize manufactured home communities as viable forms of affordable housing and work to preserve them through resident ownership. Thanks.
To date nationwide, we've preserved 20,000-plus homeowners' futures by converting their communities into resident-owned communities nationwide. Let's talk a little bit about Woodbrook Wagon. Some of you might know it as Wagon's West, and some of you might know it as Woodbrook, what was the original name? Woodbrook something. Those two communities combined together in order to form this new cooperative, Woodbrook Wagon Homeowners Cooperative. This community was converted in 2017. It was purchased from a gentleman named David Clark. What's important to understand is that he is not affiliated at all with this community or with Bob's in Jamestown. He is not involved by homeownership. He is not involved in operations. He is completely not engaged whatsoever as we purchased the land or the residents purchased the land from him, just as any other investor or developer would. In a resident-owned community, the homeowners form a nonprofit business model called a limited equity cooperative. What that means is that you must own your home to live in this community. Our business model prohibits rentals or owner financing, park-owned homes, within these communities. The community is made up of a board of directors, and they are all volunteers. Members continue to own their homes individually, and they each get an equal share in the land, which gives them an equal opportunity to vote on decisions being made within the community. The biggest thing to understand is that when we have a resident-owned community, they can't profit off the land. So if someone came and offered them a gazillion dollars for this community, they would not see $1 of that. The way that the documents are written, it's any excess funds after payoff of any loan goes to a maintaining affordable housing, and those proceeds need to go back into the community. So it incentivizes these residents to remain in their homes and not to profit. I'd like to introduce you to some of our board members who are here today. We have Steve Atchison. If you'd like to come up and just present yourself, and then if Kelly and Suzie want to also come up, that would be great.
Good evening. I don't know if I need the microphone. My name is Steve Atchison. I am president of the Board of Directors for Woodbrook Wagon Homeowners Cooperative. I am a 23-year resident of Wagon's West Mobile Home Park, and very proud to say so. We purchased the property in 2017. For some unknown reason, they decided I should be in charge of the Board of Directors, but we went, you know, four-plus years without, in the black. We never went down, and we had lots of problems. We fought our way to where we are now. COVID hit us hard, and we are struggling. But with the help of Rock, it's just amazing. They're helping us. They're rebuilding. We've come together. We've cleaned up our park. We're doing what we can to get the druggies out, and it's tough. But I just wanted to put a face to that park out there. I've been with the postal service for 15 years now. I'm a hard-working man. I just want to do well for my part. So I thank you for your time. Nice to meet y'all.
And quickly, I have Kelly and Suzie Wernix.
Hi, I'm Suzie Wernix. We've lived there since 2015, and I love my home. I love the community. I'm the treasurer, sorry, of the homeowners co-op. I help my neighbors a lot. I take them to the doctor's appointment. I go shopping for them, and I love to be with our neighbors. We support them, and I love our community, and I hope that we can continue to keep our community running better than and better and better for our future. Would be great. Thank you.
And I'm Kelly Wernix. I was the original treasurer from the beginning of our co-op. I had to go ahead and step down for the time period for the evaluations of whether everything's going correctly and that things are being embezzled and that good stuff. So I'll be looking forward, if I do get the opportunity to go back to treasury, I'll take it. But I'm currently doing operations in a project manager position, and I hope that we'll just keep on being able to do what we do and get better and better each year. Thank you for your time.
So these are just some examples of our residents. We have residents working throughout the entire community that live in this community specifically. We have bus drivers. We have teachers. We have those that work within the food and beverage industry, et cetera. So these are just some of our dedicated board members that are driving and making decisions on a daily basis. Just a little bit about the demographics. All of these people, it's their primary residents, but we have 24% of our residents are actually school-aged children. We also have a large number of people that are living at 30% of area median income or less. So this is the community or one of the few options that some of these residents have, where they get to control their home and they get to have a say in their land. So some of the things that we have been doing since June 2022, when I first initially got involved, I had learned that the residential homes, stick-built homes that were on the property, had been determined unoccupiable, and the community was faced with having to pay relocation services for all nine homes that are on the community. Not only did that devastate them financially, they'd also already been impacted by those not paying rent during the COVID process and waiting for rental assistance. And additionally, it caused quite a challenge to understand what we could and could not do with this land. So we evaluated options of subdividing the land off. We evaluated options of selling off the homes as investment properties in a land-lease condo. And we kept hitting dead ends until I got a chance to work with Mr. Buwer on some options. What we did discover and what the catalyst for us having to make this change and have to reach out to the community was we identified that without the rental income from these homes, which comprised about 40% of their annual budget, their rent needed to increase from $505 per month to $878 per month, with the average person within these homes making $910 per month. No amount of rental assistance, no amount of support, utility assistance was going to help them continue to survive. So I came to Mr. Buwer, and I asked him, can we please renovate these homes? We need to get these back in the market. You need to have opportunities and options for affordable housing, and we can get these back to the condition that they can be occupied and be done the right way. Also, since this date, I just want to give accolades to this community. So this beginning in January, we put together a concerted effort and capital improvement plan. We've decommissioned a well that's on the property that we should have decommissioned back when we purchased the property. We've done septic repairs that were affecting us at the county, and we have sign-off and approval from the county to continue operating with the septic. We've had 10, at least, days of community-wide cleanups. That could be anything from removing debris off people's lots to helping them repair their homes. We've helped them power wash their siding, paint their homes, et cetera. No landlord would do that. We had a water leak repair, which was costing them almost $6,500 every two months in this community, when normal operations would be $1,500 a month. We believe we might still have a leak somewhere, but currently, we're at about $1,700 every two months, and that is about $25 per household. That sounds more reasonable than $6,500. But that's cost tens upon tens of thousands of dollars to perform that work. We've supported them with applying to sound rebuilding, and we've supported applications to the Lakewood/Washington Rental Assistance Programs. We've improved the security of the vacant homes. We've surrounded them with construction fencing. Our residents have a partnership with the police department, and they are diligent in making sure that there are not vagrants or transients occupying the homes. And when they are, the police department has been great to work with and has come and helped them remove those people. And the big thing that's been really, really hard for them is they've been administering rules violations against their neighbors, telling them, you have too many cars on your property, or you need to fix that deck, or you need to clean up that trash. That is a very, very hard thing for a neighbor to do to a neighbor. But it's important, and it's necessary, and it's traditional property management requirements. And also, we've been successful in getting Mr. Clark, or DDK, as some of you know, to transfer over titles he's been holding erroneously or through reasons I do not know why. So we're cleaning up some of the background that needs to happen. So what's next? We are going to be working, we have, we have a gentleman here tonight, a national construction person who works only within manufactured housing communities nationwide. We're working with him as well as another vendor, and hopefully, his numbers pencil out a little sharper than the other guy, right? We've been working with the building department to identify, what do we have to think about? What are our permits, right? What if we have lead? What do we have to do? All of those sorts of things to identify what needs to be done so that when we go forward to Rock USA and ask for money, we can get that money at an affordable way, and no, we're not going to have to come back. We're also trying to identify what these homes will rent for. They're one, two, three bedrooms. We want to bring these homes back into compliance. We want to take the extensions off of them that have been built over the years without permits. We want to upgrade all the electrical and heating and plumbing, full gut rehabs. They will look like new homes, with the exception of the exterior walls. So the other item that we're currently going through is a full engineering design for sewer and water within the community, although we can't get that done within the next few months. Once we have the design, we intend on getting price estimates pulled together, which are initial back-of-the-napkin costs, is over half a million dollars. And we're going to work and hopefully get some funding from either the Price Fund, which is being administered by Housing and Urban Development, or we'll work with the county in order to potentially get some funding there. But that's probably going to take two to three years before we can get new water and new sewer in place, new roads in place, stormwater, drainage. And I'm grateful to know that there's sewer connections here at the road in all of the appropriate locations to support both sides of the community. The other thing is, I don't know, something. But I would like to thank all of you for your time, your understanding, your support as a community. I have loved and enjoyed coming to Lakewood. I've been coming here now. I feel, every month, it feels almost, but I'm welcomed every time I come here. And I enjoy being able to support this community and others, like Bob's in Jamestown, to work towards improving the community for the betterment of all the residents, as well as preserving the long-term affordability of this community and hopefully others in the future within this city. This is not a sprint. We're not going to get this done tomorrow. It's a marathon. I appreciate your patience as we address each of the different issues that we face. But what's important to understand is that it takes time, takes time for these residents who have multi-generations of only ever experiencing being a tenant, who probably often was not treated fairly, right? To becoming owners and having owner mindsets. It takes a year or two just to get them to understand what it means to be an owner and why you have to make some of those hard decisions. And when you compound COVID into that conversation, it really set us back. The biggest thing is making sure that they're operating the property effectively, efficiently, and affordably, because it only benefits their neighbors, their friends, and their family, as opposed to a traditional investor relationship where it only affects their pocket. So I appreciate your time. I'm always available to answer questions, whether it's here or in another forum, but I really do appreciate you taking the time to listen. I know it's a busy agenda, and I just hope you'll consider Rock USA as a partner in improving your community.
We always make time for good news.
Thank you.
So Councilmember Bokey has a question.
Oh, great.
Thank you, Amy. Thank you for the presentation. I'm just wondering about your construction project on the units. Is the goal, is part of the requirement of Rock to also keep these units as low-income housing, less than 30, less than 60% AMI? Or can you make some market and some lower? Or, because then I guess options start to open up.
While we have no deed restrictions, we have no low-income housing tax credits involved, we have no home funds, et cetera. We have to, based on the cost, offer these likely at market rent. Because while I hope the pencil gets sharpened a little bit sharper, the estimate that I have not yet seen, the estimate I do have in hand, which does not include any unforeseen conditions, abatement permits, et cetera, is already at 1.5 million.
For how many units?
Nine. And they're about 785 square feet on average, with the exception of the general's home, which is about 1,800 square feet. That's not chump change, and I got to make the numbers work. So if I have to offer these at market rate, I'll have to offer it at market rate. But if I can find any tax credit incentives or other programs that might be out there that creates a deed restriction, I'll do that. But I've got to make it affordable, meaning feasible. As I keep saying to some of these people over there who are like, let's put granite countertops in. I need this to be feasible, if that makes sense.
You're not the only one looking for a definition of affordable housing.
What's that? I'm sorry?
So you're not the only one looking for a definition of affordable housing. It's hard to pin down, so.
Yeah, affordable, obviously, there's lots of different definitions. 80% of median income or less is typically considered affordable. Sometimes you can go up to 120% based on Housing and Urban Development's income guidelines. Obviously, we'll have no restrictions specifically in this community. We have no restrictions within the manufactured housing community. We give a preference to those that are at 80% or below, so.
So I'm wondering now to the, to the manufactured housing side, how do, I mean, people eventually move, or a lot of people move, circumstances change. What's the process in selling my spot? You just said that you can't make a profit on the total. Help me out.
So we, the entity that I represent tonight does not own the homes. They own the stick-built homes. They do not own the manufactured homes. Typically, what happens when someone wants to sell, they notify the cooperative of their intent to sell. They can, and anyone who purchases the home has to be approved by the cooperative. They require background checks, credit checks. They require background checks, credit checks. All those things to make sure that they can A, be a qualified resident under the tenant selection criteria. A tenant of the land, right? And um, upon that, then they have authority or approval to purchase the home. But as far as if the home is occupiable, if the home is in condition to sell. If the home sells for a dollar or twenty million dollars. The cooperative does not have the authority or say over that structure because that structure is individually owned. But if the structure is deemed to be concerning. They can make calls to the building department or the Board of Health, which has happened in a lot of our communities to say, hey, we have a concern with this resident. But as a cooperative, beyond the rules enforcement, keep your lot clean, have your life safety egress. Be a good neighbor. The cooperative can't address what happens inside the homes. Does that make sense?
Okay, okay. I can still sell the home.
You can sell the home. You can take the home off the property if it's structurally.
But I can't sell the land underneath it.
No, the new person applies and becomes a member. Has to be approved, but becomes a member of the cooperative, just like a condo association. I like to consider it like a condo association or a homeowners association. Because cooperatives are, no offense to N W C D C, but cooperatives are really hard to understand. But everybody has one equal share in the land that lives in the community, who's approved under the membership criteria. And everyone, any one of those residents can then also be a board member. They have to be elected. There's annual minutes. Everything need, everything follows, um, not Robert's rules, but the other one Sturgis or something. I'm a Robert's rules person personally, so I have a hard time with the other one. Um, but it's just, there's bylaws, there's community rules, there's an occupancy agreement. All these things. It's not a, it's not a traditional lease, land lease community.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you. Uh, in a prior life as an attorney representing banks, I had a lot of a lot of occasions to cross paths with uh, mobile home communities in one way or another. And I, I commend your group on the assistance that is provided to the homeowners and the homeowners. Diligence in, in pursuing, improving their community. Uh, too often the state sys, I've seen the state system be so willing to help that what the result is an overpayment to an unscrupulous owner. Leaving the residents with a myriad of problems and having paid too much for the property. Uh, so it's a, it's a great exit strategy for a unscrupulous owner. Uh, and people leave clouded titles because they've sold the same unit two or three times. And so I've seen all the dark side. So it's really, uh, really a good feeling for me to see people come in and have some success and and please stick with it because you're heading in the right direction and it sounds like you have some great assistance. Uh, so that you can maintain your interests there and improve your, your standard of living. I do have one question though. I, I know why in Oregon and Washington you have all the dots up there because there have been state programs to assist residents in buying. Uh, but I'm also.
You're talking about this, this street?
On your map.
That is, yeah, keep going.
Uh, I also am familiar with the fact that some of the highest concentrations of mobile home sales are in the southeast. And I don't see any dots down there. Can you explain the regional difference?
Well, first I can explain that this organization was founded about twenty five years ago in New Hampshire. So New Hampshire treats mobile home, mobile homes as real estate. Making it very easy to obtain financing and for homes to get purchased and sold, get improved, et cetera. You can't do that with the homes in most other states because they're considered chattel. Or they're considered movable property like a car. You can't go and get a loan to improve your home in most of these other states. So because we started in New Hampshire, we obviously have the largest concentration up there. But as you move through New York and you move through, get out of New England, which I'm a, I'm a horrible New Englander and I apologize for that. I'm an East Coaster. But we have started moving actually Pennsylvania. We have purchased and converted our first community. It's a two hundred and sixty unit community. In Mount Bethel, which is near Appalachia. And as we move over towards Colorado, you only see a couple of dots. This, this graphic's probably a little outdated, but um, Colorado, I believe Washington. Uh, New Hampshire. Not sure if Vermont does. There's a thing called opportunity to purchase, OTP. So in New Hampshire specifically, and those other states, Colorado, there's a law that says that a manufactured home investor owner has to offer it to the residents first. Some state laws are very different and they say you have to allow the residents to match any price you receive. That's where we come in because we catch wind that it's on the market. Or we catch wind that the, the community organizations catch wind that, hey, that Bob's in Jamestown, Dave Clark wants to sell it. We meet with the residents. We identify if they're interested in purchasing. We explain how, I hopefully we explain well enough how hard it is. And then if they say yes, we work with them on a letter of intent, getting to the purchase and sale stage. And then we provide pre-development, forgivable pre-development funds, pre-purchase funds, excuse me. Um, to do all the due diligence. We provide them with opportu, options with, um, to do property condition reports. These intent, I've been in for profit real estate development most of my life up until I joined this organization. And I was shocked at the due diligence that we do within these communities. But the due diligence is only as good as the information that's provided, right? And so in some instances, yeah, and I would say specifically in this community. There may be, may have been some shady dealings that happened during the due diligence phase. That did not give us all the information we needed to make an educated decision. I wasn't here, so I can't say how it happened. But what's to be done is that we put together a capital improvement plan when they purchase the community. And we put in loan covenants that say within X, Y, Z years. You need to work on getting this resolved. You need to work on getting that resolved. In this particular instance, unfortunately, I'm going to say it, I hate the word, I hate the excuse COVID. Right? But it, it really did do a number on progress across this nation on our communities.
So final comment, I, I, I am, I was interested to hear your it was cooperative ownership. I also did a lot of work for title companies and they told me that the only place in the state of Washington that had stick built homes on a cooperative land. Uh, arrangement was here in Lakewood Lakeside Country Club on American Lake. It goes back to about statehood and they have uh, this unique if same thing with financing because they have stick built homes on a cooperative and
Yep.
Bank, most banks look at it and go, uh, I don't, I don't know about that because they have an undivided interest in the property.
Correct.
But so now we have two.
Unfortunately, though, because these are owned by the cooperative, the people who um, will rent these homes. Will rent them as tenants, traditional tenants, so they won't be a member of the cooperative. Um, because we've looked into, I wanted to do air condos. I wanted to do whatever I could do to try to make this so that they could still get their residual income that they need to keep, bring their rents back down, right? Because that's what the goal is. Um, because selling it wouldn't help them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, thank you for being here, all of you to, to do that. Clearly, we're in a period of time in an era where uh, affordable housing and innovation is to try to preserve it or create it. Um, you know, are, are, are important. And I think this is an example of something that can be done locally, doesn't require a top down driven, uh, driven process, but, but just only committed people who want to uh, invest in a community of their own. Um, I had a, just a couple of questions. In the presentation, you mentioned that you had two projects in Lakewood. Is, is, was that a reference to two mobile home parks being combined into this project? Or is there another uh, project elsewhere in the city?
This year, we converted Bob in Jamestown to um, a resident owned community. Was that in March? February, March? So they're still going through their growing pains, but that is, so you actually have four manufactured privately owned communities that have been combined. Right? Into two separate communities. So Bob in Jamestown was two separate communities that are now one entity. And Wagons West and Woodbrook is another two sets of communities that were merged together.
Okay, I know where Wagon West is, okay? But where is the other one? Is it a Woodbrook?
Woodbrook is on Woodbrook. The entrance is um.
Both, so both of their two.
Right, they're across the street from each other almost.
Yeah. Okay, do they get along?
I don't know. Steve, do they get along? They're on opposite sides.
I see. That's, it's a, to do that. Hmm. Well, okay, I, 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 yeah, I, I can picture where they, I can picture where they both are.
Yeah.
That they'll be able to go and do that. So the, the, the number on the slide that said eighty three. You, it said eighty three units, not including the rental properties. Is that how many manufactured homes are a part of the project?
No, um, we have forty two manufactured home sites and eighty three residents. So eighty three is a
Trying to, so.
Without the rental homes.
So the eighty three is people, not homes.
Correct. Eighty three physical residents of the community that live within the manufactured housing portion of the community. Whereas the rental homes give us nine stick built homes. And we estimate that there was probably at least two and a half people per household at a minimum. So that would have been times nine, we probably displaced anywhere from twenty five to thirty residents. Um, when we had to relocate them.
So um, I guess your, your organization, Rock, has been in, an entity for about twenty five years. Um, around the country. How long do you stay engaged with these before they become self sufficient and they don't necessarily need your helping hand?
I would say that what our commitment is, is to be their technical assistance providers for the life of the loan. So if that's a ten year loan and at the end of the ten years, they decide they don't need us anymore, they have that option. But we encourage them to continue to include their local technical assistance provider to help keep them on track. It's like a project management role in many instances to say, hey, did you guys realize that you had to do this or don't you know that this is due? To get some of that burden off of their shoulders of trying to balance work, life, right? And running a property. So Nora is not only the technical assistance provider, coaching and guiding this community. She's also a loan servicer for Rock USA Capital and provides us with the financial reports.
And um, when the, when the president spoke, he, Andrew says that we're doing what we can to get the druggies out. Uh, it's how significant of a problem with that and are they? Do you really have a mechanism to move someone who's a member out if they're uh, going on off? And how is that working?
But uh,
And so, so is, is the problem primarily manifested in the rental homes? Or is it in, in some of your? Or is, or is the problem also exists in your
I'll take that.
Manufactured home owners who are members?
So we have two homes that allegedly we believe are distributing drugs. We also receive a large amount of transient traffic because of the homes being vacant. So they do continuously gain access to these homes and we continuously call the police and kick them out and put another board up or another screw. But they find ways to get into these homes. The sooner I can get these renovated and occupied, the sooner this community becomes a safer place for everyone. As far as when someone is violating rules. Let's say allegedly they have a lot of traffic coming in and out or a lot of cars coming to their property. There are mechanisms within the bylaws that allow a member to be removed from the cooperative. And then expulsion from the community. But we also have to follow landlord tenant laws. And I understand there's a mediation rule here in Washington State. So we have to follow those processes as well. So we can expel them from being a member, but we also have to treat them the way any other landlord would have to treat a resident within their rental properties.
Well, I, I think that um, you know, you're not the only location within the city that has challenges with the, um, the, the use of drugs and, and, and things that are going on. And um, as a consul, we have been engaged with trying to strengthen some of the laws to be, to be better tools to help that. Um, and that's a work in progress, uh, because the, we're talking about laws and tools that have to be instituted at the state level. Um, we've made some efforts to do them locally and then had to undo them because of, of, of how the state manages. But I, I think we're, I would like you to know that we're, we're, we're committed to making progress to strengthen the tools that will perhaps help you to do that. Um, but like many other things in your endeavor, it's something that's going to take some time.
Absolutely. It's a nationwide crisis. I live in New Hampshire, Manchester specifically. We have the highest overdose rate of fentanyl and uh, Trump declared us the drug den of the United States. So it's a challenge no matter where you live. And the best thing is, is that these residents are able to keep an eye out.
And it looks like from my trying to do the math, that you have about twenty school age children. Um, within the, uh, you know, over there at the percentage of school age children, and I'm trying to say that's a twenty four percent of eighty three or something like that. Uh, that uh, uh, since you've become owners in that, um, and, and increase some stability, how are they doing at school? Kids, can, can, I, 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 are they kids doing well? Um?
Well, there's a banner on one of the homes next to Kelly and Suzie's. It says, congratulations, Kiara, for graduating high school. So I, I'd say that overall, there's a lot of healthy, happy and productive kids. With some very strong parents in place. I've met them. They scare me.
Okay, well, well, again, I, I, I do appreciate that you, you're being here. Telling us where you are in your, uh, in, in your journey and in your, and, and your effort to uh, strengthen your community, uh, and congratulate you for uh, being on the journey and for the successes you've had so far.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Well, thank you for all of your time. I know it was a lot more than the forty five minutes I planned.
No, that's not a problem, but we would like to take a photo of your group if you don't mind.
I think it would be appropriate for them to be.
Maybe the county's got all that money now.
And at this point, it's time for our public comment period. And so public comments are accepted by mail, email, or by live virtual or in-person comments. You can send them in advance by mail to Rihanna Shoemaker, City Clerk at six thousand Main Street Southwest, nine eight four nine nine, or BS Shoemaker at cityoflakewood.us. Comments received up to one hour before the meeting has been provided through the City Council electronically. So City Clerk, are there any names that you'd like to call, please?
Deputy Mayor, we received no comments in advance of this evening's meeting.
Thank you. As a call upon your name, please announce that the members in the audience may comment on the items related to anything related to the city business under the public comment period. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. Virtual comments, if you would like to provide live virtual comment, public comments, you are, you will need to join the Zoom meeting as an attendee by call and telephone dial number that's on the screen. That's two five three two one five eight seven eight two. And enter the meeting ID number eight six eight seven two six three two three seven three. Or visit Zoom US and enter the meeting ID, which is on the screen, eight six eight seven two six three two three seven three. Upon entering the meeting, please enter your name, other choice of identification. Use the raise hand panel feature be, please be, to be called upon for the participation by calling by the, by telephone. To use the raise hand feature, press star nine on your phone. And you will be unmuted and provided your name and address. Each speaker has three minutes as always. So normally we do in-house and outsized, and I don't know where we are, but we start tonight.
Deputy Mayor will be going virtual comments first this evening.
Okay, thank you. The first hand I see is Mr. Dennis Haugen.
Hi, Dennis Haugen here from Sioux Falls. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
This is interesting, but this really affects who you are as a city by comparison. National news is constantly talking about moving homeless. And of course, just lately, Seattle moved homeless out of the offer to get ready for the All-Star game. And then very shortly after, another group complained, and this gets nationwide. Another group complains because there's people moving in their neighborhood. Now, big cities who get a lot of homeless have been, because a lot of them are, are bussed freely up to the big cities. They start complaining and crying. So then guess what they do? They try to do everything they can to push them out in the suburbs. So then what does that do for your housing? Well, if they take up housing anywhere and they're illegal, then they're pushing out a, a resident who has to go to something lower, not as good. And a lot of times those prices rise because the government finances it. And so their bidding in the market makes the prices higher and it makes homes less affordable at any level. But I think in, in two thousand eighteen and twenty twenty, when you really, in my opinion, you de facto made yourself a partner to the drug cartels and they're huge. And of course, they advertise any, I mean, they charge the people to come across the border. But, but of course, they also advertise to their customers the benefits that are available to them in all of the various sanctuary states that will allow it. Figure out ways to get in and utilize the benefits. And of course, one big cost to drugs, we hear about the people that die, but there's people that become handicapped for life for doing drugs. Then of course, they're, they're, they're models of the state or words of the state for the rest of their lives. And of course, since you don't like numbers, as somebody called me on asking you about money. And I was asking, you know, you want to know the money that goes in, that's a mathematical thing. And then you want to know what the outcomes were. Neither of those are, neither of those are used because you don't seem to use math that much. And that may even be from your schools. But then, of course, when you compare yourselves to other states, oh, you say everywhere, well, it's a matter of degrees. And you need to know what those degrees are. And so I think you've pretty much bought your direction. Your, your biggest industry is drugs, illegal drugs of all kinds. And that's where you are, partners.
Next, we have James Dunlop.
Can you hear me okay?
I hear you.
Okay, my name is James Dunlop and I'm a resident of Lakewood. Earlier today, I attended by Zoom the Community Development Committee. I mean, I went to, I attended, you know, to make a public comment via Zoom, the Public Community Development Committee of Pierce County. And they were talking about tiny homes, you know, the swamp community, which Lakewood has had so generously, I think, agree, agreed to chip in a million dollars or something like that. And it sort of struck me that, you know, Lakewood and Pierce County are having to deal with these issues, which completely in a way over its head, like homelessness, homelessness and what is the causes of homelessness? And how it is impacting the city. And I mean, this kind of, you know, Mr. Haugen has just articulated his particular theory, I think, about homelessness and what causes and how it's causing, how it's damaging communities. But, and, you know, but it's, you know, I think that what I get in terms of a tiny home village is, and which is, it is a crazy idea. As I said at the meeting, I think it's, it's like seeing, it's like creating a leper colony on the outside communities. I mean, I think Donald Trump suggested that one, we might deal with homelessness like that. You, you ship the homelessness, the homeless to places outside the community, outside the city bounds, sort of. And, you know, there are other things going on. I mean, again, Mr. has talked about the education system. Lakewood has one of the worst, you know, despite, you get these rosy reports from Clover Park School District saying how wonderful things they are. But reality is Clover Park School District is one of the worst performing school districts in the, in the state of Washington. Yes, a couple of people every year go to manage to get to sort of Ivy League or whatever. But, you know, those are just individuals. But you look at, you look at the overall state of state of, of education in Lakewood, and it is bad and it has been declining for ten years, maybe bonger, but from the statistics I've seen. So I'm, what I'm really trying to say is that Lakewood does need to be in more intelligent and perhaps need, needs to articulate a way of working out what is the cause of all this stuff? You know, are you just going, is Lakewood just going to be a victim? I mean, I would really think it's a good idea if there was some community involvement for people to discuss these issues, which might not seem relevant to day-to-day city government. But I think it would be really useful if there was some forum, people, everyone could discuss it, get some ideas about what, what's going on and where it's all going. Those are just some thoughts. And that's all I've got to say. And thank you for hearing, thank you, thank you for hearing the aim.
Next, we have Christine Manetti.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Hear you, yeah.
Oh, hello, good evening, everybody. Christina Manetti, Lakewood. Um, I was just thinking that maybe I would make a comment about something I was thinking about while driving around Lakewood recently. And I thought maybe it would be a good idea for the, the City Council or the City Hall. Um, I was driving down Bridgeport and Stillcombe Boulevard, like, I guess, going east away from the Oakbrook Shopping Center, past Custer. And I was thinking, I was looking at it with the eyes of somebody who is not from here because I have an international student staying with me for a month. And I thought, wow, this doesn't make a good impression. You know, the businesses that are there in the, the former houses, they, they don't take care of the properties. They don't look at all, you know, like anybody cares about them on Bridgeport, the same thing. You have things that are also, you know, empty for a long time, even decades. And I was thinking, you know, I mean, this isn't a good impression. And, you know, you'd like to invite people to do business here and things. Wouldn't it be good to impose some kind of standards? You know, I think that this is the case in other cities. I, I don't know the details, but I've heard about it, that, you know, if you have a, a property, a business, you have to maintain the landscaping, right? And it doesn't mean like hacking to bits the, the established trees, like at Dr. Hirsch's former office next to the post office. It means doing it the right way, right? And so you could also require the, not only maintain them, but, you know, and not mutilate them, but also require the use of native plants. This is also, I believe, done elsewhere. You require landscaping, I think, and why don't you require native plants? There is a really horrible example of the former United Mutual Bank. It crossed from the former Tinsel Library. Those native plants have been there since I was little, you know, so, I mean, probably even before, so at least nineteen seventy-two. The Salal was really established and it's very difficult to establish. There's orchid grape there and Gary Oaks. And the Salal, after the owners of that property, didn't water it last year during the very long drought that lasted into the autumn, September, October. They just about completely died. I think a little tiny bit has survived. Um, you know, they were decades old and you can't even establish it very well, you know? So it's important for the city to impose standards. We want people to come here and think, hey, this is a nice place. Hey, people care. And if you let people just, you know, their storefront is like a calling card of our city, they come here and they think, wow. And they turn around and leave, right? You don't want to see dead stuff everywhere or garbage and like bare asphalt. I mean, give people some standards and I think they'll rise to the standards. You have to expect a lot of people. Don't be disappointed.
That's all the hands that I see raised. Madam Clerk, are there any others?
Deputy Mayor, there are no other virtual hands raised at this time.
Thank you. With that, we'll go to our list and I apologize upfront if I mispronounced your name. Uh, no, you're not the first one. It's Lydija Stalworth. Second.
Thank you. My name is Lydija Stalworth. I live at one one nine one eight Alameda Avenue Southwest, Lakewood, Washington, nine eight four nine eight. My work that I get paid for is I work in permanent supportive housing in the city of Seattle. I'm also a volunteer at various places in Pierce County. I'm here today because the city has lowered our property value by building a six-foot wall and placing our home in a ditch. The ditch will cause, cause cars, because there's a roundabout, will cause cars to drive into the cheap chain-linked fence and onto the roof of our home. The chain-linked fence is not consistent with the southeast and southwest corners of Washington and Alameda. My first communication with Troy, the project manager, was in eleven of twenty twenty-two, when I found out they were building this wall. I would like to request a copy of the original grant request to get the money to build the sidewalks on Washington Boulevard. And I yield my time back in case you have a question.
We don't.
Okay.
Questions, so, but we would take your comments on advisement.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, Nora Kelly, Nora, Nora Edge, you said yes and no. So have you made up your mind if you're going to speak?
Deputy Mayor, she spoke with the prior presentation.
Oh, that was that group. Okay, thank you. So next on the agenda. A lot, oh, let's see, they signed up on and said yes and no. Okay, that's fine. Tamara Cook.
Can you make that go up there so I can see where I'm at? That'll go. Hi, my name is Tamara Cook and I live in Lakewood here. And I'd like to talk about security. I'd like to talk about the security with our telephones. I'm sorry. See, I get so nervous up here. There's no business licenses on webpages anymore, okay? There's no businesses licenses on the buildings no more. We don't know what we're dealing with, who we're dealing with. We don't know when we go on the websites, who we're dealing with. Are we dealing with this guy? Who is your, who's your administrator? We don't know. It used to be that we had to have a license and on the front page of a webpage. And we used to have to have a, a tax ID on there. That's, it's not there no more. I'm sorry. Just let everybody else see. This affects people and I know a lot of people are talking about, about homeless people. It literally makes people homeless. This non-security of these devices that we have. Here's another one, just, just to keep it in mind. We're, we're, so, so we have a capitalist economy that we're not paying tax into our checks and balances. We don't know who we're doing business with. We don't know if our communities are getting the money that they should be getting. And we don't know what kind of harm it's doing to the people in the communities. I've been one for a person who's been very hurt. I never participated in e-commerce because I spent my time learning about enterprise systems and about networking. And once I learned about them, I decided, you know, this isn't good. Nobody should have to sign an open-ended agreement to use a device. We're back to using, we're back to paying people to protect our identities. We, we don't even know who these people are. You know, Nord VPN, it could be somebody in Botswana or somebody in, in, in China. We don't know. I don't like this system. I'm tired of it. I can't even, I don't use it. And I can't even get a bus book to know where I'm going now. I'm protecting myself, but because I'm protecting myself, I don't get to, I don't get information that normal people do. I don't get to know who my representative's phone number is. I don't have a phone book anymore. I can't go back to a telephone that says, hey. I can't go back to a telephone that says, hey. Uh, you have your privacy rights with your landline. I want my privacy rights back. Okay, I wish I had more time, I could really get into it deep. But I do want my privacy rights back, and I want to know who I'm doing business with, even in town, I want it on my front door.
Abraham. Any questions? No.
Nobody wants to question.
Deputy Mayor, point of order.
Oh, this is what they they gave me with the bus company. They said, here, carry this around, you want to carry this around with all your groceries when you go out?
The next person who signed up for public comment is an active litigant against City of Lakewood. Represented by counsel. I am concerned as a licensed attorney, even though I'm an indirect party in this. That this is an improper communication with counsel, because this can, I know of, and certainly with Ms. Walker. Because his counsel is not consented or withdrawn. I also feel it's inappropriate to. Put us in the untenable position where we can't comment, because we shouldn't comment with respect to. Active litigation, I would move if there are no other people who have signed up to. Close public comment at this time.
I have a second.
A second, that.
All in favor? That's all that's signed up on the list. If there's anyone else that would like to speak to public comment. And you didn't sign up, you have the opportunity to do that. You can come forward. Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor, there are no other virtual hands raised at this time, and I don't believe there are other um attendees who would like to provide public comments.
I look to our sitting. Sitting managers. All in favor, say aye. Oppose. Accept. Thank you. Okay. Okay. Okay, we move to our considered agenda, Madam Clerk.
A, approval of the minutes of the city council special meeting of June twenty six, twenty twenty three. B, approval of the minutes of the city council study session of June twenty six, twenty twenty three. C, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of July third, twenty twenty three. D, motion number twenty twenty three dash sixty seven, authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement. With KPG promis in the amount of two hundred and fifty one thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. For design engineering services related to the Wadsworth, Silcox and Boat Street sewer extension project. E, motion number twenty twenty three dash sixty eight, authorizing the execution of an interagency agreement. With the State of Washington Department of Ecology for the Pollution Prevention Assistance Partnership. F, motion number twenty twenty three dash sixty nine, authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement with Flock Safety for Vehicle Technology. G, motion number twenty twenty three dash seventy, authorizing the execution of an interlocal agreement. With the City of Kent for Wireless Network Forensic Server Use. H, motion number twenty twenty three dash seventy one, authorizing the award of a construction contract to Sound Pacific Construction LLC. In the amount of eight hundred and ninety three thousand, six hundred and ninety nine dollars. For the construction of the Union Avenue Southwest Sidewalk Project. I, motion number twenty twenty three dash seventy two, accepting a donation from Amazon. In the amount of eight thousand dollars to support the South Sound Military and Community Partnerships, SSMCP, Special Events and Initiatives. J, motion number twenty twenty three dash seventy three, appointing Ross Strangsholt, Mark Hare. Sean C. Hill, Chris Kaufman and Linda Smith to serve on the Independent Salary Commission. K, motion number twenty twenty three dash seventy four, appointing Councilmember Don Anderson to serve as alternate on the Pierce County Regional Council.
Thank you, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Don't move. Seconds.
It was been moved by Councilmember. Uh, Councilmember uh Branstad is requesting to remove motion twenty twenty three dash seventy one. Mister.
I assume my motion was out of order, because Mr. Branstad had had the opportunity to withdraw an item, so I will move at this point to. For approval of the consent agenda, less item. H.
And second by Councilmember Bokey. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mister Branstad. A motion twenty twenty three dash seventy one.
And Madam Deputy Mayor, this is a uh. A contract for sidewalks on Union Avenue in Tillicum. Um, it's uh. You know, something that has been discussed for many, many years about along that 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 particular road of getting sidewalks. This contract, it looks like it's going to put sidewalks in on one side of the street uh. Um, along where there are many businesses, but I'm I was a little concerned, because I never saw. A design for this project, and it speaks to that it will include. Uh, curb gutter sidewalk and street lighting. Uh, on a side of a street that has multiple businesses and multiple. Parking areas in front of businesses to to do that. And when I looked at the bid tabulation, it was a little bit. Difficult to see the street lighting, there there's a, there's a line item that says. Illumination package, and it's two hundred and some thousand dollars, but. Uh, that that isn't providing any particular. Um. Details to that, and so, you know, I would be more comfortable. Myself. Um, having had a chance to see what the design is going to be on this particular commercial. Um. Area where we are, like. How wide the sidewalks are going to be, what kind, what's, what what sort of. Street lighting is going to be there. And does it look to make sense for the access to the multiple businesses that are along. That southeast side of that street, which is the side. Closest to the railroad tracks and 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 I five, that's there. Um. Somehow or another, in our lead up to this, you this was not a project that was ever. Briefed to us. And I, and and the the packet here doesn't particularly provide a lot of information to be able to pass on to the community either. So, uh, yeah. Uh. You you know, I'd like to uh. To um. Let me. Think when where we're at. I'd like to move to continue this uh item H to uh the uh. Our meeting of August seventh. And when we can have had a chance to review the the actual plan of this. Uh, this this project and see what it is we're authorizing to be built.
I think um. Do we have a design of that project, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Deputy Mayor.
So he's requesting that we have bring this back August seventh. All in favor? Reproved?
There is a second.
Is there a second? There's no second.
So one of us has to be the. If you, we rule on the. On the motion.
Yeah, nobody's moving.
But. Yeah, that's what Chair, as Chair, that's the ruling that needs to be made. It dies for lack of a second.
It dies for the lack of a second.
And I'll move approval of item eight.
So approved by Councilmember Anderson, second by Councilmember Bokey, that it remains. Okay, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
The motion passes. We move to our regular agenda, resolution twenty twenty three dash oh seven. Fox uh community, Fox Recreation and Community Service Deputy. Mary Dodsworth, she kind of.
Deputy Mayor, we have resolution number twenty twenty three dash zero seven, expressing support for the public private partnership with Partners for Parks. For the H Barn Complex Project at Fort Stowitham Park.
Okay, and for that, we have Director Mary Dodsworth.
Um. Good evening, uh. Mayor Pro Tem Moss and members of the council, I am not Mary Dodsworth, but I get to do her legal writing for her, and I did help her with this particular. Uh, resolution, ultimately, what we're trying to do is give the city sort of the permission to go seek funding. That sometimes you can only seek when you're the city, as opposed to Partners for Parks, and we are very interested in the H Barn Project. And a good financial footing for it, and so this is sort of a public private partnership, and what the resolution does. Is it provides council authorization for the city to pursue those grants that would ultimately support the H Barn. I'd be happy to try and answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions for?
And the city managers. Obviously thinking I missed something.
I would just like to add, Deputy Mayor and Council, that this request came from Partners for Parks, likewise, as they seek funding. Um, since we are the owner of the property and the project, um, they need verification from us that. Um, that it's okay on our part for them to do that as well. Thank you.
So to get a a motion to approve. Resolution number twenty twenty three dash oh seven.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Bell. All in favor, say aye. Oppose? Resolutions twenty twenty three dash oh seven passes. Uh, Mr. City Manager, is there any unfinished business?
There is not, Deputy Mayor.
New business?
Not this evening, Deputy Mayor.
So with that, we will move to the post by our city manager.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and good evening, Council. Um, I'd like to call upon our police chief, Patrick Smith, who would like to provide the council with a review of the second quarter. Police report, which I understand is included in your packet, so with that, Chief.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor and members of the council, I just wanted to go over the uh second quarter. Of. Police report for our crime statistics and numbers. Um. I wanted to start off uh with our calls for service, as you can see, I've tried to simplify our report and break it down to essentially the past. Um. Three years of service, but um, so I'll start with our calls for service. Over the past. Um. Gosh. Over the, over the past uh times we've done this, it covered multiple years. And so we just tried to break it down so that it's easier to understand, and so that it's easier for the public to digest. So our first quadrant of this, it covers the first quarter of. Of twenty twenty three versus the second quarter, and that just goes to show a the progress from one quarter to the next. And from that, we show that there's an eleven percent increase in calls for service. In the second quadrant, it also shows our second quarter comparison comparing twenty twenty two to twenty three, twenty three. Which shows a fifteen percent increase in calls for service. Our year to date numbers show that there's an eleven percent increase. In our overall calls for service that our officers uh deal with on a daily basis. From from that, because we have an increase in our calls for service, we also show an increase in our calls. Uh, in our arrest, thank you. Hmm, we also show an increase in our arrests. This is important to note, because as if you'll recall, many of the laws have been. That were previously felonies have been brought down to uh either misdemeanors, etc. So it'll show that even with the the changes in the laws, officers are still making a significant number of arrests. Showing an increase from first quarter to second quarter in our felony arrests of thirty three point six percent. Um, and all the way down the line, we show a decrease in our gross misdemeanor arrests by fifty percent. But we also show an increase of thirty eight percent in our warrant arrests. Overall, we show a sixteen percent uh increase from first quarter of this year to second quarter of this year. The second quadrant showing the um. Second quarter of twenty twenty two to second quarter of twenty twenty three. Uh, overall, we show a thirty seven point one percent increase from uh last year to this year. Uh, in our felony arrests, we show that there was a one hundred and six percent increase overall. And uh, so I'll move on to the next quadrant. Um, in comparing year to date with last year to this year, at this same moment in time, we show a sixty two point three percent increase. Uh, we also show an increase in our gross misdemeanors, and finally. Uh, overall, we show a twenty three point four percent increase in our arrest year to date. Um, our crimes against person, this is one of our critical areas that we always look at. And how is it affecting our our community and. Everyone around our, all of our visitors. Um. We, on this, the most critical part is that we show an an increase in aggravated assaults by twenty five percent. Our simple assaults, we show an increase of fourteen percent. In our homicides, there there was a a significant change from first quarter to second quarter, we had three homicides, which show. That there were, was a two hundred percent increase basically from one to three. But I'll tell you this, the the best part about this police department and the commitment that the officers and detectives. Who work all of these critical incidents, for every homicide that is represented here, all three of them, every last. Individual suspect was in custody within six hours. And so every last homicide that we have, all of these individuals have been held accountable. And will continue each and every investigation until uh it goes all the way through to prosecution. So in our crimes against person, we show a nine point five percent increase overall. When we look at our second quarter comparison from second quarter twenty twenty two to twenty twenty three. We show a decrease of three point nine percent overall. And when we go to our year to date numbers, we show a one percent increase overall for our crimes against persons. Our property and societal crimes, uh. It it shows from our first quarter to second quarter that we're down. Point zero six percent, or pretty much even with last year. Um, in our other crimes, we show um some significant changes, first in our. Um, property crime and also in our motor vehicle thefts, and we'll go into that just in a quick second. In our second quarter comparison, overall burglaries were down 19%, fraud was down 35%, larceny is down 22%. Our motor vehicle theft, which is our Achilles heel for the police department, we're up 39.3%. Overall, in that, that quadrant, we're down 5.1% in our comparison for 2022 to 2023. Finally, our year-to-date numbers show overall in this area that we're down 10.4% in our property and societal crimes. And we're hoping to show other progress in this area. The, the one area that I pointed out that seems to be the most trouble for the police department is with our stolen vehicles. In that area, I'll show that there's a 23.7% increase in stolen vehicles. On this slide, it's, it's pretty troubling as it shows when we have a significant number of stolen vehicles and you show that level of increase. We also show the increase in pursuits and eludes. The critical part about this is that our pursuits were, were up 25% compared, comparing first quarter to second quarter. Second quarter last year to this year, our pursuits were up 25%, but our eludes were up 90.9%. In our year-to-date numbers, we showed that our pursuits were up 28.6% and our eludes were up 8.1%. Shots fired within the community, shots fired within the community, we show that overall year-to-date, we're down 3.6%. And our first quarter to second quarter, we're up 10.3% in our year-to-date second quarter to second quarter of 2023, we're down 2.3%. On this one is just showing a very critical pattern with our motor vehicle thefts. Our motor vehicle thefts show that we have gone up significantly. If you look at 2021 to 2022 and 2022 to 2023, we show that a steady increase in the number of stolen vehicles within the city. Year-to-date, we show that we're up 23.7%. And our quarter-to-quarter from second quarter 2022 to second quarter of 2023, we show that we're up 39.3%. Finally, in our first quarter to second quarter of this year, we were down 9.6%. Fortunately, one thing that we can show a very good progress in has been our traffic collisions. We're down in every zone for traffic collisions from first quarter to second quarter, down 15.5%. From second quarter 2022 to 2023, down 18.1%. And from year-to-date numbers, we're down 12.2%. And on the back is just a overall summary of all of our, all of the items that I just went over with you, showing all of the crimes by category, year-to-date and our quarter over quarter. Before I go into the fireworks, is, does anyone have any questions that they would like for me to go over at this time?
Are there any questions from council? You're good.
Okay. So one of the things that we did in analyzing our fireworks for the city, we took each year, I'm sorry, each date and analyzed it from the third, fourth and fifth to make sure that we were going over our calls for service, our fireworks calls, as well as the basically the disposition for each one. We're not moving. Okay. So, so far from what we were able to determine, on July 3rd, we saw an increase in our calls for service by 61%. And on July 4th, we saw an increase of 74%. And on July 5th, we saw an increase of 32%. Reports of shots fired were down 33% wrong and fireworks calls for service had a slight increase. On July 3rd, it was a 33, I'm sorry, 30%. On July 4th, there was a decrease of 10%. And on July 5th, there, there was no change whatsoever. So overall, from what we were able to gather, yes, we did have an increase in calls for service. We did have an increase in calls as it relates to fireworks. But fortunately, overall, there was no real increase in our shots fired during that timeframe. It was actually down 33%, which is a good, good sign for the city as a whole. Any questions related to the fireworks for the city?
Councilmember Branstadter.
Chief, yeah, thank you for the slide. I mean, this is an area that we always get asked for, for data about, but could you go over what exactly some of those disposition definitions are? Like the definition of a solved on arrival or I'm not sure what GOA means or, and all car, all car broadcast as a, as a disposition. I'm trying to.
So, so each one shows the action the officer took, one being if a citation was issued at the scene. This second category was the patrol went out and they checked the area to ensure that nothing was going on. The third one is when they gave a verbal warning to the individuals at scene. The fourth, fourth area was unfounded, meaning that they found nothing at the scene to substantiate the call. And the next one, the actual call that was sent out was canceled. The third one shows that it was GOA gone on arrival and the next is solved on arrival, meaning that they met with the two parties to ensure that there were no issues or problems and the issue was resolved upon arrival and and the last one is just an all car, car broadcast, meaning that it was just for information only and it was broadcast to all calls and all cars as information only and no one actually was responsible for, for responding.
And so how is this data impacted by the fact that we went, that South Sound 911 went to an online reporting system? Are those online reports reflected here or is this people who actually called with a phone number?
They, they should all be recorded on here, whether they called or reported it through South Sound 911.
And so in the, our, our data shows that from 2014 to present, we've never issued a citation.
That, that is what it shows.
Okay, Chief, thanks.
Are there any other questions, comments? Thank you so much for your report.
Thank you.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Just a couple more items to report on. On Saturday, had another very, very successful summer, Summer Fest event and our Parks and Rec Director, Mary Dodsworth, estimates that about 25,000 people again attended this year, which is about where it was, where it was last year. Also, 632 people utilized the shuttle from Pierce College, the parking lot down to the event. And then somehow 40 people more, 672 actually took it back. So some people probably walked out initially. Also, 57 people registered to donate blood at the event, which was actually fantastic. And I guess in summary, I'd just like to say it was a great success and very, you know, unforgettable experience for our community and a lot of happy faces down there. And I'd like to thank Ms. Dodsworth and her team, along with the Lakewood Police Department, West Pierce Fire and Rescue, Pierce College, all of our volunteers who came out in force, our sponsors, vendors, entertainers, the food trucks, many who actually ran out of food at the event. And which is a, it's a good sign. And of course, those who attended the event for, for having such a great day and celebrating who and what we are here, here in Lakewood. And, and the words of Coach Belichick, on to next year.
Mr. City Manager, what was it told you that you would?
25,000 participants Deputy Mayor. We were notified last week by Congresswoman Strickland's office that the House Appropriations Committee has included $1 million in support of Lhasas Gravely Lake Commons Affordable Housing Project, which the city has helped sponsor and help facilitate. As you remember, we did request two and a half million. However, the number that has come out of the, the first cut there with the House Appropriations Committee is $1 million. So I just wanted to give you a heads up on that and it still has a long way to go. It's still going to get through the full house and then of course, got to go through the senate. So it's, we'll probably know sometime later this fall or even, you know, the latter part of this year with the final outcome of this. But this is certainly good news that it did make the first cut. Also, Wash Dot let us know that their design team, as it relates to the Gravely Thorne Connector project, is transitioning from the scoping phase. The project has been kind of really not moving very quickly in the last year and a half or so, but it's moving into full design right now. They have about 15% of the design that's completed. Construction schedule, once design is, design is completed, would be to advertise in March 2025, which is, you know, a year and a half from now, and then begin construction in June of 25 and be completed by July of 2026. This new schedule is a two-year delay from what we, what has been communicated to us, actually just a few months ago. Our speculation is that the change is just being driven by increased inflationary costs at the state level and that the money was perhaps being used in support of other projects and is now becoming available back to this project. We also do know that they have had some turnover, Wash Dot has, and personnel, a lot of their experienced individuals, including a couple of individuals working on this project, have recently retired. But again, that's speculation on, on our part. The Tacoma Country and Golf Club has actually reached out to Wash Dot leadership and actually also invited myself to attend a meeting with them to discuss this project and this timeline. And the reason being is because the Tacoma Country and Golf Club is going to be hosting the 2027 USGA Senior Women's Open. And I know one of their concerns is that this project be completed by that time. So I think looking at some dates and times sometime in August, and I'll report back to the council on, on, on that. You know, in addition to Summer Fest, JBLM had their airshow and I just want to call out a couple of individuals because the city played an incremental role in working with JBLM on our side of the wire as it related to security and traffic control and such. And, and particularly, and particularly, in particular, our Assistant Police Chief John Unfred, who oversaw kind of emergency operations for, for both Summer Fest and for the, 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 the airshow. And then Lieutenant Pete Johnson served as incident commander for Summer Fest. So he was in charge of everything that happened down there. And then Lieutenant Chris Wesby was not only our liaison or with JBLM, but was also incident commander for that, for that event. So I don't know if you're aware, but I do want to let you know that LPD, it was all hands on deck. You know, the chief had a, you know, request that, you know, there was, there was no time off or anything because we had to have resources available for both of those events. But again, I just want to thank those individuals in particularly for their leadership and pulling all of this together, but really the whole LPD department coming out in force. And again, making sure that both events were safe and secure. And I also want to thank Chief Smith and I see in the audience, our great partners from West Pierce Fire and Rescue Chief, Chief Sharp and Chief McCurdy, Deputy Chief McCurdy, Deputy Chief. But just wanted to share that with you as, as well. And then as it relates to your, your, your calendar, a couple of things that are coming up. So America's First Core Band will be playing at, down at Fort Stilicon Park Pavilion is our summer concert tomorrow evening. And I know a lot of us, we go to, we go to change of command ceremonies and the first core band is probably, I mean, they're just incredible. People always ask me, you know, you know, the, the change of commands can get a little mundane. Personally, my favorite part is listening to the first core band play their music. And so just wanted to pass that on to you. And then next week on July 27th, we'll be having the groundbreaking at Fort Stilicon Park for the turf field infield projects, including Pierce College's ball field as well. And so they'll be down there as well. And then later on that evening, the mayor will be hosting his coffee house at the park pavilion. And I know the city clerk has reached out to you regarding National Night Out. So far, there are 15 sites that have signed up and invited police and fire. And of course, all of you folks to come out and spend some time. And so let us know if you can't attend. I know a number of you have already done so. If you could let the clerk know. And then we'll get you assigned to somebody if you wish to ride with an officer. Of course, you can always do it on your own as well. And then we'll send out the schedule and the locations of all of the sites well, well in advance of that. So with that Deputy Mayor, that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Are there any questions for City Manager? Hearing, I would just like to say to the city clerk that if there's anyone available, I will ride along with them, but I'm not available until four o'clock. Okay.
I think earliest is about five o'clock anyways.
Oh, great.
Five, yes, you're good.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna start with that. Council comments, Mr. Bokey.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Moss. PCRC meeting Thursday night at 6:00 PM via Zoom. And I'm just looking at the, in welcoming Councilmember Anderson on board to this. The, the, the big thing for us that night is the T, the PCRC Work Group, TCC Countywide Funding Process Summary and Recommendations. I think Mr. Busic is trying to write, rewrite my one of the two amendments that we proposed. The work group after one year of work supported, I believe, two amendments, one that TCC, that's the guys that score the transportation projects, have more transparency. Something which is good and something we have, we have hoped that they would do, although it's pretty nebulous as to transparency, meaning I think just you got to put stuff on a website. So I don't know that it's going to be to the level that we would like it to be transparent. And two, some changes to the operating procedures of the group that I'm not quite sure. And then I believe we also passed on a voice vote, although Piala may want to get rid of it. Some other kind of about membership and who from the PCRC might actually chair those committees or something now. So not much really to, to, after a year. n- not much really to, to, after a year of, of going through that. The votes were uh several members were unable to make it. Uh, so there were a lot of three-three votes. So, I don't know how many more amendments Piala's gonna have on Thursday night, but that's why we needed Mr. Anderson's vote. Um, and I don't know that ours is gonna be ready to go either. So, um, and it's not in the pack yet here. Um, there is a presentation, but I'll just leave it at that. That's all I got for now, but we'll have to work on it. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Bell.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, my big exciting news is that I went to Summer Fest this weekend, and I thought it was fabulous, so amazing, just, um, just a huge diversity in things to hear, see, eat, do, you name it. Um, we just had a fabulous time. I went with my husband and daughter, and she loved it all. And also, they enjoyed the air show, but from a parking lot, so. But they still, they saw it. You could see it everywhere around Lakewood this weekend. So it was just amazing time to be in Lakewood, I think, this weekend. And I think the community really showed that. And so, I just wanted to say thank you to everyone. It was a great time. Thank you.
Thank you. Stenerson?
Thank you. Uh, well, on Tuesday, I enjoyed hosting our mayor of our sister city to a round of golf, the American League Veterans Golf Course, followed by lunch, which Ms. Moss and Lee Miss Branstadter uh attended. Um that was good. I also attended the air show. Um, and uh, with Deputy Mayor Moss, the performers uh the performers reception the night before on Friday night, it was good to meet some of the pilots and, and their crews. Had an opportunity uh during the air show to reconnect with a, a number of people in JBLM leadership, but also connect with the new Garrison Commander. I, I had attended the change of command, but not had a chance to get to speak to him, because I had to run off. I'm planning on attending the huge Pierce County Regional Council meeting, as I here duly authorized, one-time alternate on Thursday. The chain of command uh of the two-two uh striker brigades earlier in the day. Uh, I attend, plan to attend that, and I asked the city clerk to see if I've RSVP'd and do that for me if, if I haven't. I probably will not be able to attend neighborhood night out. I'm already double booked. Um and trying, it was trying to decide which one of those things that I do before this one came up. So I, I disappointed in that, because I'm a pretty regular attendee. And with respect to uh public comment tonight, uh, I've spent forty years telling uh opposing parties not to talk to me. Uh, and anything they say can be used against them, and it turns attorneys on the other side into witnesses. It's highly inappropriate. And our rules of procedure at paragraph three point five state in the last sentence, quote, "The mayor shall determine the overall time for public comment," end quote. It doesn't give anything in the, with respect to guidance, with respect to reason, necessary reasons. It just, you can cut it off. So, that's, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson, and thank you for keeping me on course. Councilmember Branstadter?
Yeah, the same as Deputy Mayor. Uh, you know, I uh was, was attended, attended Summer Fest, and I was um both very impressed about how it continued to have all of the excitement that I've come to expect from Summer Fest, and yet it was also an event that, that evolved. It wasn't the same things that you see year to year. There were, there, there were new things. There were things that repeated, but were uh, well there, being able to go and do that. Uh, I did note that many people in the crowd seemed to appreciate trees. Uh, and, and, and we're there, being able to go and do that. And the sister cities uh, 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 present programs uh, at, at the pavilion. Uh, they were well-attended. I think uh the trees had something to, 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 to do with that in terms of folks choosing which stage to to, to, to visit, um, to be able to go, go through and, 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 and do that. And I agree with Councilmember Bell that the the attendees that were there were quite representative of the diversity of the community. Um, you know, you know, you, you, we, we were to go back a half dozen years, you know, we weren't seeing that at, at, at all of our city events, and I think so, so, so we've turned some sort of a corner in communication and, 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 and and, and, and in appeal to, to reach, uh, reach across where we are. I, I did go to the luncheon, uh, thanking the mayor from Belong to, for uh stopping by, okay? Uh, and, and making us a, a stop on his, his trip of multiple locations here in the United States to be able to go and do that. He was uh very gracious in terms of uh, of uh, of how his appreciation for, for how we were doing it. Uh, and I think the acting city manager Kraus did a, did a good job of, you know, putting, putting together a uh, a, a low-key, but, 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 but respectful uh, uh, door for him here. Uh, and he did uh indicate that he definitely would be having an invitation for a delegation from Lakewood to come to Belong uh sometime in the next couple of years, uh, depending on how, and how, how, how things are, how, how things are going. So, um, you know, I think, I think that was a, a, a really good indication of uh how good a host we can be and, and, and how uh sister cities' relationships can uh evolve and mature. Uh, I, I plan to attend the two-two uh change of command uh on Thursday. To be able to go and do that. The city manager, he likes, he, he, he likes the band, you know, but, but, but I'm a former sergeant major, so I like to look at the formations and, 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 and criticize the NCOs for, 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 if, if, if they're, if they're sloppy, or, or or praise them if, if, if things look really sharp. Uh, to be able to go and do that. And then I think the last more serious thing that I would just wanna pass on to my colleagues is that we, we received a very good presentation on, on, on housing um that was uh provided to us uh with uh lots of good data about, about things, about how, and, and help us learn about our community to be able to go and do that. However, then inside that presentation, there was a report from a consultant, and the consultant list of it about fifteen policies in our comprehensive plan that in the view of the consultant were anti-equity. Um, which uh and I, and, and, and quite frankly, with my lens, I couldn't see what they were really talking about with, with, with all of those policies. They all, many of them seem rather neutral and they're and that, as we look at revising our comprehensive plan with respect to housing, I think we need to keep in mind that we're not looking to make points with folks in Olympia, but we're trying to do common sense things in terms of policy for the entire community that'll, that'll move us, move us forward with a little bit less lamentation about the past. Um, so we'll, but that, 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 those, those will, will come back to us uh down, down the road. Um, that's all I have, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
You know, I did uh, was at the luncheon with the mayor, and we do have a proclamation. I failed to bring it down from my office upstairs, so I will present that to my colleagues. It was very well written, and so, he presented it at the luncheon, but I forgot to get it for tonight. I apologize. I also, I attended the chamber luncheon on Thursday, and I can give kudos to our chief. He is making his rounds. He's getting to be known in the community. And the questions that they were asked, they were real pleased with the answers that they received, so kudos to him. And it was a good meeting. Lot of fun. Summer Fest. A lot of you have met Alicia, my great-granddaughter. I took her to the and I also took her to the air show. I went home and collapsed. She never stopped the whole time. Let's do this, let's do that. So, it was a lot of fun. I, I really did enjoy it. And, and as honorary commander for the base commander, we had front row seats, so she was right up by the planes, and she loved it, and she wants to be a pilot. Now, and she was able to meet the captain of the, the, yeah, she was able to get his autograph, and he talked to her for a moment and got a picture with her. So she had a great time, great time. And I had no problems getting in and out of the Summer Fest or the air show. It was, thank you, Don, for the information. It was, it was well-designed to get in and out, so it was a good job. I didn't have a problem. If I can make it in and out, anybody can. Let's see. Uh, is there anything else for the, Mr. Anderson?
With respect to Belong, uh, since I won't be on the council, I actually got a personal invitation from the mayor to come back, and my has been capacity. But they are planning, not for this next January, but their annual uh Foundation Day, which will be like their two-hundred-and-sixtieth anniversary as a municipality, or some, something akin to that. The January, first week of January in twenty twenty-five, they are having a larger celebration than normal and having a homecoming. And that's the one that you indicated that you would like to have sister cities attend, just to make bigger and better. And also, for the for the benefit of retired Command Sergeant Major Branstadter, do not go to an Air Force change of command. You'll have a stroke.
They do it right. Oh. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Here and then to meet the adjourned.